For this regular city council meeting for Monday, November 8th, please rise with my leadings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanyon?
Present.
Pratt?
Present.
Bellinger?
Present.
Rhines?
Present.
Gilroy?
Present.
Hanson? We did receive word that Councilman Hanson cannot be here this evening, so I would accept a motion to excuse his absence.
I'll make a motion to excuse him. And I'll second it.
Thank you so much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we have the approval of the agenda for this evening, unless there's a change or addition that needs to be made.
I'd like to make a motion to add an item C to action items 10, a motion to fill vacant city council seat.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Do we need a roll for that because we're adding our... Okay, so will you call the roll, please? Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries, or addition carries. And now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to come forward at this time, non-agenda item. Come on up, Adam. You look like you're ready to move.
Always a good idea to be first.
All right. Well, thanks. Hi, Adam.
So, hi, good evening. I'll be brief. I just wanted to make sure I conveyed what I believe is Cory's final council meeting, how much on behalf of all the staff at our district, how much we really appreciated his leadership and collaboration. One of the awesome things about our community is how we all coalesce around, work together, and support our children that live here. And the collaboration we've had between the city under Cory's leadership over the last many years has just been tremendous. And so, I wish you the best of luck. I know you'll be wildly successful, but please remember us and, you know, stay in touch. And then I guess just last, briefly, another one on Cory's decisions that has just been phenomenal for the school district. I just wanted to make sure the council's aware of just the tremendous impact that Chief Woff and the Williamson Police Department's had. Their integration and connection... Sorry for this, but their integration, connection, collaboration with the school district is just amazing. Just amazing. I don't know if I have enough words to explain what a difference that's made. Their presence, working together on different things that are going on. There really are no words for the difference it's made. So, another great decision by Cory and all of you, and I know you validated that decision, but just thank you for all you do. I know working in public service right now is challenging, to say the least. Appreciate all your efforts. And that's it.
Well, thanks. You haven't been here in a while in front of council, so it's nice to get that little update. Things are going well so far this full year?
We're doing okay. Obviously, there's challenges, but we're keeping kids in class as best we can and pushing through, so we're doing well.
Well, I know it's Cory's last meeting, but certainly I'd like to invite you back when we have our new city manager in place. That'll be an important relationship for you to foster with our new city manager. And don't be a stranger. Come back whenever you'd like.
Yeah, well done. I plan on being back again at the end of the year. This year will be a little more normal for me personally.
Well, exactly.
And be back at the end of the year and kind of give an update on how everything went. But again, always, you can always reach out.
Excellent.
Have you collaborated and talked shop with him?
All right. Thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely.
Any other audience participation? People coming forward? All right. Moving right along, we've got the Eastern Ingham Farmers Market Sowing Growth Season Report. Tom and Jane and Sharon, you're all here, so I'd invite any one of you up if you'd like to come up and give that report and just fill in council about what happened this season. I know, right? Our muscle back there.
Oh, no. We are both prepared to talk about...
Excellent. Well, you got this in front of us.
Yeah, this is, I guess, a summary for all of you. So just kind of briefly looking at the timeline, going back to 2018 was the transition that sowing growth came into existence and the market transitioned from city leadership to sowing growth. And then in 2019 was my first year and really was a rebuilding period and just trying to get our feet on the ground. Hired a market manager. We started our food assistance programs and the development of the sowing growth board. Last year, obviously, was challenging for all of us. And really just keeping the market open and doing it safely was enough to keep us going. And so we did some new things. We did online ordering. We had a market bank, was very active with their tokens and a lot of monitoring, saving protocols, and that sort of thing. And then 2021, this year, we really had a banner year in a lot of ways, a lot of growth in vendors, volunteers, and our visitors. And so more detail in our card. And, you know, I think one of the most important things about keeping the market going, the organization going, is our volunteers. And so we took a hit last year. You know, a lot of people just were uncomfortable coming out. We just had a lot of challenges in that way, I think, with all of us. But this year, things really rebounded and we've had both growth on the sowing growth board and more board members involved, as well as more members of the public and Williamson High School National Honor Society and even got some volunteers from Oklahoma National Honor Society. And so really broadened our base there. And then, you know, obviously, the market visitors or customers are the critical piece. And you can see that if we compare the last three years, this is logarithmic, so you don't get to see the big difference. But we averaged, you know, a lot more, about 100 more people per market this year than we had previously, with a high of 905 people coming through the market, which was, you know, just really great. And we had set a goal of trying to reach 10,000 visitors and we broke that and hit almost 11,200. So I'm not sure where our goal is for next year, but...
I'm scared of this.
I don't know.
We'll make Jane stand out on the four corners and fly people in. That'll do it.
And then, you know, vendors. We just had a really great turnout of vendors this year. You can see that in the past couple of years, with our highest count was like 22 vendors. This year, our highest count was 34. I mean, we just really blew it out of the water. And we had 57 different vendors this year, by far our highest, and a lot of new vendors, which has been really great. So, you know, a lot of this hard work and effort and the support that everybody in the community provided, especially the folks with Sowing Growth, has really paid off. So it's been, it's really great to see that. Next slide, or next page, is just kind of... I did this last year and I haven't done it for this year, but just kind of looking at where our vendors are coming from. And you can see that the majority of the vendors, at least last year, were from Williamson. And as you, you know, go further out in distance, you know, we start to drop off. But with, you know, a majority of the vendors were within 10 to 12 miles of McCormick Park. So that's, you know, kind of really nice to see that, again, it's that part of the community that's both strong, their vendors, as well as the shoppers. So where do we stand today? Today, we have a really solid volunteer base. We have a committed and supportive customer and visitor community. We have a strong and mostly consistent and growing diversity of vendors. I know, you know, people are always sad and we don't have a coffee vendor.
Including yourself.
You know, I've tried to nail their feet to the ground and so they have to be there every week, but, you know, there's only so much to do as a market manager. Bribing didn't seem to work. I started to run out of options. But seriously, you know, we're really trying to keep that consistent, consistency as best we can, and that is a challenge and it always will be a challenge because, you know, vendors have lots of other things going on in their lives and it's not always their sole business for some of them. And so, but that's a goal, is to get that more consistent and reliable. And then, you know, we're in relatively solid financial footing right now, which is great to be able to say because we haven't been able to say that the past couple of years. So it's going forward. We have a really strong sponsoring organization, Sowing Growth, and they deserve tons of credit for all the board members and Sharon and Jane especially because you guys have been through here, through it all. Sharon and I spent just about every one of the 22 markets in 2019 putting, setting the market up every morning, every Sunday, for 22 weeks in a row. And so a lot of support there. And we have good recognition and, you know, a high opinion and awareness about the market throughout the community. And that's, you know, that is worth everything. So what does the future hold? This fall and into early next year, we're looking at investing in and going through strategic planning for the organization and the market and to really develop the three- to five-year vision of where we want to go and how to get there. In 2022, COVID permitting, we're going to resume many of the activities that we didn't do this year, the children's activities, the Power Code Use, which is an education program for children, weekly live music, art booth, the community tent. And, you know, with 34 vendors at one point this year, adding four or five new tents is going to be kind of... I don't know. You know, space may become an issue and that's something we need to think about. I didn't dream that we'd be thinking about that, but that's a good thing. We continue to diversify, if not grow, the overall number of vendors. So really trying to figure out what are the core vendors we need and how do we keep them and try to not have too much duplication and really try to engage the Williamson businesses more, especially with regards to hot food. I would love to have some representation from Williamson restaurants, you know, at the market on a consistent basis. And really, we have not cracked that nut so far and I would love to find a way to do that. Continue to build our volunteer base and strengthen those relationships we have with the high school, National Honor Society, and other volunteers in the community. And continue to build and diversify our financial support and expanded and diversified the Sowing Growth Board and Board of Directors, as well as the Advisory Council of Sowing Growth. So we have a lot, lot to work on and a lot to be thankful for. And thank you for the opportunity to share where we're at. Any questions or thoughts?
Tom, thanks so much for coming and just sharing with us, you know, how the year went and what you guys are going to do moving forward. And, you know, anytime you want to come back and talk to us and tell us what's going on or give us a preview of what's going to happen next season, that would be fantastic. Sharon, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, you covered it pretty well. The thank you was the big, big thing.
Yes.
Yes.
Because it's been very valuable to us to have, obviously, the venue.
Yes.
And the storage.
Yes.
Has been very critical for us and the police support that we sometimes need every once in a while when there's an air-to-car there.
Yes.
Right.
Opening up the van, all of that stuff. It takes a team to do this and we need that.
Well, we're very happy that you're here in the community.
We appreciate it, too.
I love Sundays down there and I know the community does and I know that you keep getting busier every year. I'm still hoping for maybe in 2022, the food truck challenge to come back. That would be fantastic. So, you know, keep us, keep us in the loop. Let us know what's going on.
A special goodbye.
Yes.
Thank you for being here tonight on Cory's last meeting.
So appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks. It's great working with you and thanks for all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Moving on, we have our council interviews and these are two applicants that had previously applied and I'm just going to go over their applications briefly. We were able to meet you both at previous council meetings. We've got Jacob Imets and Chuck Siebold. Jacob has a history of volunteering in the community. He comes from Western Michigan University and, you know, would like to be more involved in the community. Chuck Siebold is a business owner here in the community, Riverwind Senior Assisted Living, has construction experience and is looking to be more involved in the community as well. And so we had the opportunity to meet you both. If you, either one of you would like to come up and add anything, but I think, and I know, Jacob, you came to the One Planning Commission meeting to see what Planning Commission was about and we were able to talk to you a little bit that evening as well about getting involved on some of the boards. So do any of the council members have any direct questions for either of the applicants? Anything that either one of you would want to add before we move on? It's okay.
I covered my life story last time.
Well, both, thank you for both being here.
Yeah, it's really, it's really great to be here and be involved and this is awesome, so.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. Moving on, we have our council meeting minutes of October 25th, 2021. I'm looking for approval unless there were any changes that need to be noted and/or if we can just approve these.
Move to approve.
All right. Do I have a second?
Support.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? No? Motion carries. Noah, you had an opportunity to look at accounts payable this evening?
Yes, I did. I also had a chance to talk to Chief and Cory and talk about a few things. And after a thorough review, I found everything in place. No additional questions from me. So I'm going to make the motion to approve Chuck's 74851 dated 10/20 through Chuck's 74912 dated 10/29 and ACH 156 through 164 in a total of $747,542.93.
All right.
Can I open the floor for any questions from the other numbers for Cory or myself?
Excellent. Anyone have any questions regarding the financials this week? Okay. All right. With that...
Still need a second.
Yeah, I need a second. So who would like to make that second? All right. Thank you. Holly, would you call the roll, please? Gilroy? Yes. Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, we have our action items for this evening. The first is the Water System Cross-Connection Professional Services Agreement. And we have a memo on here from Scott, so I'll turn this right over to him.
All right. Well, we're recommending approval of a professional services agreement with our current provider, HydroCorp. And they've been working with us since 2010. I think this is their fourth contract starting. And I worked with Tim. There were some adjustments that needed to be done and they took care of those for us, to the wherefores and whynots and so forth in the back of the agreement. The cross-connection program is required by Eagle that we have a program with the Safe Drinking Water Act in the state of Michigan as a water provider. We have to protect the water system by checking for anything that can have a contaminant source back into the system from like a private building or a residence type of thing. HydroCorp's program is primarily focused with our commercial, industrial clients and so forth. And staff looks for stuff when we go into homes, but this is primarily on the business side of things. They have a very well put-together program with a database that we have access to and then they help me with the inner reporting that I have to do to the state of Michigan. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
And questions for Scott? Well, then, I am looking... We have a requested action here on his memo, so I'm looking for that motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize, as of September 7th, 2021, professional services agreement with HydroCorp of Troy, Michigan for the Williamson Water System Cross-Connection Control Program. The contract would extend for two years at the annual amount not to exceed $6,744, with a third-year extension that includes an increase of the CPI capped at 4%.
All right.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and we have support for it. If there's no further discussion, I will ask...
Just make one more note for you.
Okay.
On that option...
Yes.
If the city was to decide that we don't want to do the third year, it just takes a notice and we're out of the contract.
Okay. All right. Would we have to rebid then at that if we decided?
We would have to find another solution.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Scott. All right. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have the remote work policy. And this stems from having to work at home because of COVID over the past year and almost, almost two years. So Rachel, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Sure. This is some, something that we've been working on and kicking around for about 18 months now, maybe more like a year. We have been working from home remotely. We have some staff that have been doing that since March of 2020, on and off. I've attended a couple of different seminars and conferences in which others have recommended that if you're going to continue a remote work environment, that you should really have a policy on book so that there's guidelines and expectations for those staff members. I took a look at a couple of different samples from other communities and kind of meshed them together and made them fit with what we're currently doing. And then I asked Tim Perone to take a look and review and he and Matt Norford did that. And the end result is in front of you for approval.
All right. Any questions for Rachel? Dan?
The only thing I had noticed, and you said Tim has looked it over and Matt Norford's looked it over, so I'm sure they've seen it, but is it Section K? Employees will report work-related injuries to their supervisors from this practical call. I know at work, if, say, they trip coming into the building or whatnot, that's workman's comp. How does that work if they trip over their living room rug at home? It's not a workplace.
It would be considered a work comp claim. The way, when I discussed it with our risk management MML representative specifically, he said if they're performing their work duties in no matter what environment they're in, they're covered under our workers' comp insurance. He says, for example, if you are, you know, sitting at your home desk and the chair falls out from under you, you're covered. If you're carrying a basket of laundry upstairs, you're not covered because you're not working. And so when I, when he kind of simplified it down to that, I, it made a lot more sense to me. Like, okay, if you're actually working, if you're during your work hours and you're performing work tasks, you know, you're lifting a box of files that you've brought home or something like that, that would be covered under the city's workers' comp insurance.
That makes sense.
Tim?
We raised that exact question. Brogan Gordon-Love is our specialist in workers' comp. And it's crystal clear that a work-related injury...
Is covered.
Is covered by workers' comp, but it has to be reported immediately.
All right. And Tim, I see on here that you were able to review the policy. I know that Matt's not here, but this looked good and we can move forward with it.
I highlighted a couple of different things.
Okay, go ahead.
One that caught my eye is under Section 3, Employee Expectations, as number J, employees will allow the appropriate city representative to have access to the remote work location for purpose of accessing safety and security upon reasonable notice by management. Is there a plan in place or is it just...
Currently, there's no plan in place to enforce that section. But if we had an employee that maybe regularly was having work-related injury issues and we needed to figure out what the cause of that was or the stem of that, I think that just protects the city in those rare instances where you may have an issue.
Is that also in relation to shift to the IT equipment and making sure that it's appropriately secured? Because I noticed that is highlighted in others as well. So using the IP, Simon, VPN, almost.
Yep. So as soon as we knew, kind of the week before shutdown, I immediately contacted IT right and said, this is, looks like this is the direction that we're going to have to go. What do we need to do? And it was, you know, we need to update your router and we need to do X, Y, and Z. We need to get this Cisco VPN system loaded on any machines that would be using, used for city purposes so that we could have that two-point authentication to log into there so that it is a secure connection.
And so this is an after-the-fact thought, but everybody that's been doing this already has a city IT equipment, all of them all.
Correct. Now we do have that, yes.
And I just renewed it against our policy and yours is pretty thorough.
Any other questions for Rachel? All right. Well, with that being said, thank you so much for working on this, to put this together because I think this is kind of the new normal that we've all thought was, you know, might was going to go away 12 months ago, but it's stuck around. And so being prepared is the best plan of action and I think you guys have done that. With that being said, I'm looking for a motion for approval for the work, remote work policy.
I'll make a motion to approve City of Williamson Remote Work Policy.
Second.
Thank you. And we have support. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
All right, and we are on to our third action item. And that would be the appointment of the new city council member to fill that vacancy. It's the action item that we added on, so I'm looking for a motion for the appointment.
I'll make the motion to appoint Chuck Sebold to our vacant council.
All right, thank you. Do I have support for that motion?
I'll support it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Welcome to city council. You'll want to get in touch with Holly so she can swear you in. And one of the reasons that we moved this on to an action item for this evening is because we do have two more meetings left for the remainder of the year. And I wanted to make sure that we had a full council available because we will be going into the interviews for the new city manager. So Holly will get you sworn in so that you can participate in that process as well. All right. And we have all of these vacant seats. I'm saying that to our viewing members out there as well, as well as you, Jacob. We have a lot of boards. We do have some seats available. And there's information on our website or you can call City Hall and make those inquiries or if you have questions, because we'd love to see those seats filled by the beginning of next year. That concludes our action items. Yes, we do. Yes, yes. I think we have to add, it's too late to add the agenda for this evening. But we can do that for next agenda. Moving along, we did, we do not have any discussion items. We did not receive any correspondence, so I'm going to move right into department head reports. And we have Cory's final city manager report. And I had an opportunity to be with Cory the end of last week, and we kind of went over some items and where things stand, where everything is at. So Cory, I'm going to turn this right over to you.
You know, I don't have a lot more to add tonight. The memo updates everybody, I would say. You know, I think things are as teed up as they can be moving forward. I had a good meeting with Rachel today to go over sort of last-minute status of everything. So I think between Rachel and the staff here and the department head team, you know, everybody's in a good spot to keep moving forward. So I'm excited to see how things go and certainly wish the council all the best on the next steps with the city manager hiring process. And looking forward to seeing how that works out, so.
Okay, if there's anybody that would like to ask questions now, speak very slowly. And let's see how long we can drag this out. I'm just kidding. Cory, you know, you have just been a consummate professional and you have really moved us forward in the short amount of time that you've been here. You've really positioned us well. And we've had some major projects that you've had to spearhead and make sure that we've stayed on pace, that we've been fiscally responsible. And I just really can't say enough about the work that you've done. It's been a pleasure. I still have your phone number. Please do not block me. But I just, I wish you well. And I know that you will be back in, you know, public service at some point because I just, I don't know, I just, I just have this gut feeling, so. Comments from anybody regarding his report?
No.
No?
Exactly. We couldn't ask for anything more.
Yep, thank you.
I miss you.
You've gone above and beyond your entire time here. We couldn't have asked for any more from you while you were here. Since you continued to go above and beyond since we regretfully accepted your resignation. We just thank you for everything you've done here and wish you continued success.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, moving on. This is a tough report to follow, but Chief, you're up next.
I've been doing it for a year now.
I know, right?
Everything's going really good at PD. As you may know, we were involved in a couple of serious investigations this past week. 15-hour days where the guys were really working hard on it. But they did a great job and we were able to take care of business as how it is right now, too. The guys have been telling a lot of good training. Getting more information on that and doing better. The new 2021 patrol car looks great in my garage. However, there's equipment that's caught in splotching.
Right.
I can't get a laptop, would not do other things, but so, yeah, we're plugging forward with those kind of things.
It'll be roadworthy soon, maybe.
Oh, it's roadworthy?
Yeah.
It's not ready.
Right.
I wanted to know the mileage.
Right, exactly.
I know, you just talked to me. So other than that, it's going good about one more month.
Right.
For my young officer to graduate. And he starts December 13th, is extremely excited.
Sure.
So are we.
So I have a question because this is going to be your first holiday season in downtown. Will you be doing Phila Cop Car?
We are. It's already scheduled for December 4.
Awesome, great. Well, I want to make sure to get that plug in and not wait till the next city council meeting because for our viewers out there, it's a tradition in town. It's the first weekend in December. Our PD has the Humvee downtown at, well, previously in past years, it's been that. But I have a feeling they're going to have something different downtown. And they'll be filling a cop car, so donations are always accepted. The items go to the Williamson Food Bank. And monetary donations are accepted as well because dollars sometimes go farther. And so we'll make sure we talk about that again at the next meeting. But I just wanted to make sure we got that out there because before you know it, it's going to be here.
Yeah, and we're in the planning for the light break.
Okay, excellent.
We've got our guys all lined up. They're all ready to go. I think it's the exact same day. I think the light breaks in the afternoon, so we're going to fill a cop car during the day.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. We have our building report from the Livingston County Department of Building and Safety. They do all of our permitting for us here in the City of Williamson. It was quite an addition to the package, so it's good to see all of this happening within the community. If you do have questions, you can always reach out to Livingston County or check with Rachel. Rachel can put those questions forward and get answers for us. Do I have any subcommittee or committee reports that anybody would like to make this evening?
Planning did meet. We approved the site plan for the complex going in for rental units over on.
Raleigh?
Raleigh, yeah, Raleigh Road. My boys want church near me. So, yeah, so we approved for Raleigh Road, so that is going to start progressing forward. And we have a ZBA meeting tomorrow to discuss that even further, but.
Okay.
So you'll be rolling on.
Excellent. Any other reports? No, all right. Moving along, we have an opportunity for audience participation. Anyone? Okay. Council member comments. I'll start with Tom.
Well, I guess my only comment would be to hear what they said. Thank Cory. I know we've only worked together for a year, but it's been a good year. And I've seen what you did beforehand and you've done a number for the community. I know the community and the police were excited when you came here. And that excitement never went away, so thank you for all you've done for the community.
And Brener?
I've foreseen you enough, so I'll thank you for today. For those that don't know, I actually knew Cory before coming here. We went to college together, not that we knew it at the time. But it was great working with you again. I appreciated it. And I know you'll do well. Hopefully, we don't lose track of you.
Yep, thank you, Brener.
Noah?
I'll be good tonight. I'm a little lost, so I'll just be quietly. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Dan?
I talked enough about Cory and his, and his report. And just again, just thank you for the great job you've done here and wish you luck.
Thanks.
And I already said mine as well, but, you know, I, one last, you know, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure to work with you. And we know that you'll, you'll come back to Livingston. You'll visit. Because you, you've been here long enough to know that you're going to miss it. So bring the family back, you know. Or, you know, if you wake up in the middle of the night and miss us all, just send us a random text. You know, I doubt that, though.
We have the light break that you could bring.
Yes.
I want straight.
All right, yes, thank you, Cory. All right, we are, I'm going to request a motion to go with the closed session for strategy discussion collective, regarding collective bargaining as permitted by MCL 15.268C. And Tim, I just want to clarify, we're going to go into closed session. We'll come out and then we're going to have to go back into closed session for the second closed session and then come out. So, all right, council members, so that's going to be the, the way this is going to work. In, out, in, out.
So I will make the motion that Chief read.
Do I have support for that? All right, so we will adjourn. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Holly, will you call the roll so we can go into closed session?
Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes. All right, we will adjourn at 7:38. All right, I'd like to go ahead and call us back into open session at 8:36.
All right, I'll make a motion to request a city clerk to request an interview with city commander candidates one, two, three, five, six, and seven.
Do I have support?
Support.
All right. If there's no other discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Bellinger?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. And Holly, we tentatively have put together that interview schedule, so once you are able to reach out to the prospective candidates, you will be able to submit schedule to us.
How do your guesses get to look for next week?
I'm available.
Whenever you need them. Monday.
Bad.
Yeah. Not, oh, oh, not Monday.
Yes.
I'm going to talk to you about that.
You don't, she can't Monday.
I can't Monday. But everybody works during the day, correct? We all have daytime hours. So I would say, and I think what we did last time is we start right around 6:00 with the interviews. We talked about possibly 30 to 40-minute time slots, 10-minute break, just to make sure nobody's passing. Possibly be able to do it in two nights.
That's what we did last time.
Yep. So if everybody's good with that, Holly can put together a schedule for us. And certainly, if there's a candidate that declines our request for interview, let us know. All right. All right, well, thank you so much. Just remember, time changes happened and it's lighter earlier, darker later, or darker earlier, lighter earlier, whatever. Be safe out there.
Don't park in the streets.
Don't park in the streets. I know. It's, well, it's been going on for a month. But please, no parking on the streets between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m. You never know when this great state of Michigan is going to dump some snow on us down here. So with that, be safe, and we are adjourned.